Tim says it's nine and that's the time that was noticed and posted for our work sessions. This is Thursday, April the twentieth, twenty twenty two. It's nine o'clock a.m. We're in the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference in Melody Lake, Disney. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and we begin with the roll call. District one?
Crosby is here.
Uh, District two supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judge is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four. Conference ID one nine four, five seven four, zero zero pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zero four direction. Work sessions are timed for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comments will not be taken. Uh, introductions, uh, a work session, especially for our record. Uh, you need to give your name and your title before you speak so that the record can be completed. Um, today we have, uh, to begin with, the, um, county fiscal budget twenty three, twenty four, specifically for the court administration, JP Superior Court, adult probation, juvenile detention, and the clerk of the Superior Court. Want to make any comments before I call on Judge Dickerson?
I do not welcome everyone, and that is it. Pass it on.
And that was our county administrator. Okay, Judge Dickerson, are you going to be the, the lead here, the service master?
Morning ma'am. No, I, well, I may be semi in charge, but I'm not going to go first. Uh, Amy Hunley, clerk of the court, will go first. Uh, Rita will then, um, give some additional information. Casey Romero is present, who may assist, uh, Rita, who's our court budget person if necessary. And then you'll hear from John and I'll back clean up.
Okay, so let's start with Amy.
Okay, good morning. I'm Amy Hunley, clerk of the court. Um, I wanted to talk about the clerk's office. Um, I worked with human resources to, to develop a reclassification plan based on a model from the Pinal County Clerk's Office. Um, as you may be aware, my office has experienced a high turnover rate, which is affecting our ability to function efficiently. The clerk's office is an essential part of the judicial system, keeping records, processing all documents. If, um, if we're not functioning properly, it causes problems not only for the court, but also for the jail, the attorneys, and our public customers. Our turnover is causing, um, delays in the processing of our work. Um, we're trying to cover vacant positions while we're keeping up with the current workload and training new staff. Our CER Vista customer service office has been closed since February, um, due to staffing shortages and training issues. Um, the reason our staff are leaving are usually for more money. They're often hired by other county departments making four to six thousand dollars more annually. There's little opportunity for advancement in our current structure. Um, the only way to really promote from is to, if someone else leaves. So when, when they do promote from within, it leaves a vacancy on our frontline staff and that affects the stability of our operations. The reclassification is based on a model from Pima County that's been very successful for the clerk there. Um, we've worked closely with county HR to ensure the positions are classified and compensated appropriately for the work people are actually doing. Our new job classifications more accurately reflect the work being done. It creates a career path with opportunities for advancements that are merit-based and related to meeting goals of gaining court-related knowledge and skills. It also encourages and supports cross-training within the office. Um, our current court assistant and courtroom clerk positions will be combined into one classification. It will be a deputy clerk classification. This will allow us for flexibility in hiring and the allocation of our resources. It also provides increased opportunities for employees to gain experience in all areas of the office. We've added a trainee classification, which is an entry level on the job training position with an automatic progression to deputy clerk after successful completion of a one-year probationary period. Um, we've revised the deputy clerk specialist position. The new classification, it, it works at a higher level than the current classification. We've also added a deputy clerk senior classification and that position will perform the most complex and difficult tests in the office and they'll have knowledge of all areas of the office. They also will act as a lead clerk and may act as a supervisor in the absence of a supervisor, which gives us more stability and backup and cross-training. We believe this reclassification will improve our staff recruitment and retention by providing more competitive pay rates and better opportunities for advancement within the office. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rita to discuss how this will apply to the other areas of the court.
Thank you, Amy. Good morning. I'm Rita Shipley, the Budget and Finance Director for the Superior Courts. I'll be discussing two of the funding requests that we submitted. The court staff reclassification and increasing the compensation towards ninety six point five percent of median market. Our first priority is focusing on those lowest paid positions with the highest turnover, which is our court support staff. Similar to the clerk of the court, the Superior and Justice Courts also experienced difficulty in recruiting and retaining support staff. Court assistants and court specialists provide clerical and legal support to ensure smooth operation of the judicial system for every department. They are essential workers and keep the wheels of justice moving. Starting salary for a court assistant is twenty nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars per year or thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents per hour. Turnover was fifty six point one percent for fiscal year twenty-two and fifty-eight point five percent fiscal year twenty-three, year to date through March. Additionally, as Amy mentioned, once the employees are trained, other county non-judicial legal departments actively recruit them to move to their departments at a higher starting salary. A common move is to the legal secretary classification. We compared the job descriptions for the court assistant position and found that the positions have comparable requirements. However, the court assistants require more experience and they also have cash handling duties. The reclassification impacts forty-nine of our one hundred and seventy-two FTEs or twenty-eight point five percent of the employees. Of the forty-nine positions, one is in court administration, three for juvenile probation, six in adult probation, and the remaining thirty-nine in the justice courts. The justice courts will be impacted the most as all staff other than judges are support staff with one court manager per location, representing eighty-six point seven percent of their total employees. The reclassification to the deputy clerk tiers, as Amy mentioned, would start with the deputy clerk trainee position at thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars per year or fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents per hour. After successful completion of twelve months of training and completion of their probationary period, the position would transition to a deputy clerk with a nine percent pay increase to thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars per year or seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour. This structure will provide a career path with a higher salaries. Two reasons, uh, for leaving is cited in exit interviews and will also remove the pay differential between similar county legal support positions. It will also expand the chain of command for the smaller justice courts by having at least one deputy clerk senior lead position. The CER Vista Justice Court is the largest justice court with fifteen FTEs that include court specialists, a supervisor, and a court manager. The smaller courts only have a court manager and court assistants. The senior lead position would be the second in command and would be able to fill in for the court manager when they take time off. The court manager could delegate higher level projects to the senior lead position and provide succession training. After reviewing the reclassified salaries for the court assistants and the court specialists, uh, pay compression between the manager supervisor positions and their direct reports became apparent. Therefore, we've included the supervisor and court manager positions in the reclassification to maintain that pay differential. With the January first minimum wage increase to thirteen eighty-five cents per hour, there's only a forty-nine cent difference now between minimum wage and the starting salary for a court assistant. The history of the minimum wage mandate goes back to November two thousand and sixteen when Prop two oh six passed the Fair Wages and Healthy Families Act and became effective January first, two thousand and seventeen. Minimum wage increased from eight dollars and five cents to ten dollars per hour, which was a twenty-four point two percent increase. For the next three years, minimum wage increased at a fixed amount. Then, starting in two thousand and twenty-one, minimum wage increases are now based on the Consumer Price Index, which is an inflation index. This consistent increase each year causes recruitment, retention, and compression issues that must be addressed for us to remain competitive and comply with government mandates. The reclassification would provide a wage differential from minimum wage for approximately two to three years, depending on the increases to the Consumer Price Index. The estimated salary and ERE increase to the general fund for the reclassification is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars or a three point seven percent increase. While it is important to focus on the lowest paid positions, we also need to address all other positions to retain our best performers. We are looking at a phased approach to address compression due to the cost involved. We want to have a pay structure differential that accounts for experience, performance, and career progression. And this gets us to our other funding requests. Our goal is to continue to get employees closer to ninety-six point five percent of the median market salary and implement market adjustments when we can afford to do so, focusing on those that are furthest from the median. This includes making market adjustments part of the annual budgeting process and addressing compression issues. We will continue to collaborate with human resources and finance to get up to the, up-to-date market surveys from comparable counties. Due to the specialized legal work of the judicial branch, we have been actively pursuing getting, uh, salary information from other counties and also from the administrative office of the courts. The estimated salary and ERE increase for the ninety-six point five percent of median salary market is estimated at two hundred and fourteen thousand or three point seven percent increase. The combined increase for both these funding requests is four hundred and thirty-five thousand or a five point eight percent increase to the general fund. We respectfully request that the board approve these two funding requests. The implementation would create consistency throughout all of our judicial departments with competitive pay and build a career progression plan. We strive to reduce the high turnover and promote Cochise County courts as a leading competitor in the local workforce. There, any questions before I turn over to John?
I have a question or two. Um, when you talked about the, um, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the adjustment for the, uh, we want to call it the, the lowest paid positions. Um, how many positions are you talking about?
So the total positions would be forty-nine out of one hundred and seventy-two.
Okay, and I asked a question quick. That includes the clerk's office?
That excludes the clerk's office.
So I thought perhaps you'd want, I thought so. So perhaps Amy would want to mention how many she?
Well, I, you know, I wondered the segue because we went from Amy to the whole court system and I'm going, well, what about Amy's proposal?
Yeah, um, we, the cost to reclassify the thirty employees in my office is approximately sixty thousand dollars. And then for increases for next year, for the people that would promote to, from trainee to deputy clerk would be about thirty-nine, forty thousand dollars.
So ninety thousand?
Right.
So thirty-nine?
Seventy-nine employees.
Okay, and the, um, the higher paid employees, what's the turnover rate there?
Well, we have a lot of longevity, Tracy. Want to jump in on that one?
And the higher?
I mean, we're talking about, the reason I'm asking the question is because we're, we're talking about the lowest paid. The turnover rate is very high, and so we want to bring them up. But now you're talking about the highest paid and you want to pay them more. What's the turnover rate there?
Our highest levels is very little turnover. It's usually within those middle, uh, the middle bands. And I don't know, Trace, if you have any of those statistics with you right now?
And what, how are they paid now? It seems like they have pretty good salaries.
Historically, the, the court's pay has started at a lower entry rate than a lot of comparable county departments. So we're always paying?
I'm talking about the higher positions?
The higher positions, um, we're working on, um, pay classifications for those to be adequately, um, prepared. But, um, the turnover is, is pretty low, the higher.
Well, what percentage of market are they now?
They are probably close to ninety right now, I would say.
John, by the way, will cover turnover in the probation.
Yeah, for our other classes, our, uh, court admin, court security, the divisions with the judges and their JAs is, is very consistent on there. Where we have a lot of turnover is still with the probation officers and the support staff that we have. I can get you, uh, turnover for the rest of them outside of the support staff.
Hey, should John proceed now?
Sure. Okay, good. Thank you. And good morning and thank you for the opportunity to present today. I'm John Scow, I'm a court administrator and the chief probation officer for Cochise County Superior Court. Um, we're losing high-performing, experienced court staff and probation officers. Um, they're leaving, um, for various reasons, several of them for more pay. We lost our, um, um, just, this last week, um, our, uh, last year's probation officer of the year to, uh, the county attorney's office for an over ten thousand dollar raise, uh, for a new job, a grant-funded job. Um, she loved her job in probation, but, um, she, um, felt that, uh, it was, uh, better for her and her family to, to, uh, um, move over to the county attorney's office for that type of money. Um, earlier this fiscal year, the chief justice of the Arizona Supreme Court issued an administrative order describing, um, an adult probation crisis within the state of Arizona, uh, specifically in relation to the inability to attract and to retain, um, our officers due to pay. Um, the administrative office of the court submitted a request to the legislature for this year for seventeen million dollars to raise salaries throughout the state. Um, governor's office proposed, uh, proposed budget included approximately fourteen million dollars, which is less than the seventeen million dollars that the Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts requested. Uh, but however, we would take it, uh, because, um, it's a big step in improving, um, salaries throughout the state. Cochise County has been hit, um, hard, um, by this. Uh, we've lost, uh, we have twenty-eight, uh, batched officers in the probation department that doesn't include the support staff. Um, and we lost eleven this fiscal year. Two of them were to retirement, but four specifically were for, uh, including our probation officer of the year. Um, our, uh, adult probation has mandated case loads of, uh, ratios of sixty-five probationers to one officer, um, for standard probation and for intensive probation, it's twenty-five to two, a probation officer and surveillance officer. We're fine on the intensive probation. Um, that's an attractive job, I think, for, for officers. Um, and, uh, with, uh, standard probation, um, we're in a crisis as well. Um, we're not within compliance, uh, sixty-five to one. Um, our case loads are seventy-five to one right now with some of our officers are in the eighties. That's not safe. The other thing is, is those eleven people that left represented eighty-eight years of experience and, um, most of our officers in standard probation now are, are on probation. They're new hires. Um, they're not trained yet, but yet they're having to go out and do the job. Um, so we, right now, we have one, two, four, um, um, field officers that we need to, um, fill. Um, we have asked for waivers, uh, from the, uh, chief justices of the Supreme Court, uh, for the education requirement so that we could hire, um, people that are near, within a year of completing their bachelor's degree so we can get them in and get them trained. Uh, so we're doing that. Um, we are, uh, looking at, uh, promoting two of our support staff to one of them that has a degree to, um, off, uh, to be a field officer in the juvenile department because we convinced two of our juvenile officers to move over to adult to fill some of the vacancies, but we still have those. Um, in Cochise County right now, we have, um, seven hundred and ninety-four, um, active adult cases. Um, and, uh, currently, that was last year. That's what I reported last year. We have eight hundred and forty-three cases and increase of thirty-four without, um, an increase in, of officers. And we're not asking for an increase in officers from the state or from the county. If we were full, we would be in compliance, but we just can't retain the officers. Um, we're doing a great job with what we have. Um, we have supervisors stepping up and taking cases, going down the field, seeing them. We have our surveillance officers and our pre-trial officers, um, going out and making additional contacts. Um, I've authorized some overtime. We still have a, a, um, uh, in our, our, um, see, um, how we're, how we're doing with our success rate is still very good. Um, so we're going out or making the contacts that we're required to make. Um, but it's stressing our officers. We, um, using graduated sanctions, um, we're not using deferred, uh, we've suspended our deferred incarceration uh, temporarily to aid with the, um, the number of inmates in the jail. Um, we're doing a great job holding our clients accountable using the graduated sanctions. Um, we're still, um, continuing to reduce the number of petitions to revoke probation. We're on track to match or surpass our number of successful completions um, with a thirty-four percent decrease in their risk level to reoffend when they're off probation. Uh, however, we still remain out of compliance with our officer, um, uh, ratio. And so I'm just asking that, um, that our, uh, that our, uh, two funding requests, um, be approved and that, um, that the county, um, the board and county administration uh, support the, uh, the state's efforts to help with the funding for, um, probation salaries and, uh, um, um, what they want to do is raise the, the minimums and, and the, the levels of the salaries.
So how much, how much of this is probation money that Rita asked for?
I, I don't know the breakout. It's, that's, it's, it's just to bring the people up to the ninety-six point five percent like everybody else. It's part of that goal.
Yeah, probation does have some, or assistant positions. So if we look upon, you know, there's a two-part to our compensation request. The lower end probation does have some of those clarity positions.
And she reported that. I don't even remember the fact.
But then also the second bucket of money requested would go to pay increases in part for probation officers, surveillance officers, etc.
It would be the same as the, everybody in the court.
So how much would it raise the starting salary of a probation officer? And do you think that that would, um, get more people applying for probation jobs?
This won't raise the, the starting salary. Um, but, uh, the, the, um, proposal that the state has with the legislature, if we get that seventeen million throughout the state, would raise it to, um, from, we're about, we're at forty-one to, um, uh, around fifty or so, a little over fifty. It's a percentage of Maricopa counties. Um, we would be on the lower end of that because there, it will, um, tier it by cost of living. So Coquenino County would obviously get more than Cochise County officers, but, um, but it would be a significant, um, increase for us and it would be an ongoing, um, uh, flow of money, um, sustainable, according to what we're being told.
That would be eleven positions from adult probation, which consists mostly of probation officers, probation officer lead, a supervisor, and then some of the support staff, mostly in the financial division with the administrative division manager and business managers on there. And then there would be thirteen positions in juvenile probation. And that's the, uh, all the detention officers at the juvenile detention center plus, um, business manager and program managers mostly on there. They focused a lot on getting some of those salaries up for the probation officers so they're not that far away from the median market. So, and I know probation is always working to do a statewide increase for them. So, and they've been providing some incentive money and some ARPA money to, to help with those salaries as well.
Thank you. You have any questions?
Well, I, a clarification, you, you talked about the percentage that would not reoffend, you know, after they go through your probation. Um, so first, the first question, so I could figure that out, is, um, when they're put in probation, that's prior to them ever being sentenced or going to jail, right?
No, the probation is, it's a sentence of probation. It's the most used sentence for felony convictions in the United States and in Arizona. About seventy percent, um, of the convicted felons are placed on probation.
Okay, wow. I'm glad I don't know that and I'm glad I don't have experience with that. Um, but I needed to ask because I thought, I kind of had it in my mind that this was someone who was like really making mistakes, but they just needed someone to watch them. But it's after, if it's after, so that keeps people out of the jail then, in a way.
And out of prison. Which, uh, probation's about ten percent the cost of, of prison, plus a much higher success rate. It keeps, it keeps people in the community working, the families intact, things like that as well. But we, but we do, um, on probation, it's, it's mostly felonies and high risk.
Okay, and you work with the other agencies, the, the sheriff department now is, is trying to, well, with this new, um, district will ramp up their mental health, will ramp up, um, their services. And then we also have the people that help rehabilitate and get people back into the community in several different departments. So, um, you do all work together.
Right, and, and yes, and then a lot of our probationers, uh, supervisors are in treatment.
Okay, and I think that's?
Well, Tom is back on screen. Does that mean you have a question, Tom?
You betcha. Uh, and first I'd like to thank Mr. Ms. Hunley, Your Honor, Mr. Dickerson, and Mr. Scow for your attendance as well as all the other participants there. Um, so first, uh, thing that I'd like to talk about are exit interviews available to me?
Um, that's a question for HR.
We, we do not, um, keep a written form of the exit interview. It's a one-on-one conversation, um, between myself and sometimes the, the department director or supervisor. The employer requests them to also be present.
Okay, would, uh, anybody care to elaborate on compression and pay differentials?
What would be the question, Supervisor Crosby?
Just tell me about what you, you use the term compression and pay, it pay differential. So I'd like for you to tell me more about that. You mentioned those terms.
Let me, uh, take a shot at that. This is Judge Dickerson, uh, for the recorder. Uh, if you rate, looking at the justice court, for example, uh, the positions there. Currently, the court assistant, uh, CER Vista is a court specialist and a supervisor and is a court manager. The other justice courts don't have the specialist supervisor position. So if, using CER Vista as an example, got more familiar with that. If you raise the, uh, say the starting salary, the salary of a court assistant and you don't adjust the person right above that position, the specialist, that is compression. And the specialist then is going to be wondering, well, I do have more responsibility, but that person's making basically what I am now. And then you can do the same thing for the next position up, if it's a service to justice court, with a court supervisor. Well, the assistant and the specialist received a salary increase. They're now very close to what I'm making, yet I have greater responsibility. So that's what, what she meant by compression is that if you raise the lower positions, each time you raise one, you need to look at the one above that to see if that person is being fairly compensated for the fact that they have more responsibilities than the position below them.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. And so is, uh, compression a factor in retention for the higher paid employees?
Uh, I, I would not say it is now, but I say it could be if, for example, um, we provided only our first package of money requested. Uh, we could certainly see people who would be, uh, it'd be bad for morale because now again, you have people who have more responsibility, who are not really making more money anymore in a meaningful way. And I think that could lead to increased turnover. I can't specifically say that exists now.
Okay, well, I wanted to make it clear that I do understand that, uh, the courts are a fundamental function of the government. There's no doubt in my mind about that. Uh, I would recommend bonuses for the best performers as opposed to yearly market adjustments because in discussions of, uh, like Ms. Judge mentioned, uh, a, a potential tax increase, I estimated using a three percent rate of inflation, uh, with regard to my estimation of that. But in, in two thousand and twenty-three, I'm looking at, uh, inflation calculator it, on my other computer here and it notes a six percent rate of inflation in two thousand and twenty-three and a eight percent in rate of inflation for two thousand and twenty-two. So, uh, besides the, the, uh, the factors having to do with these issues of market adjustments, I think that, uh, it's also very wise to look at the overall rate of? I think that it's also very wise to look at the overall rate of inflation and the capacity of the taxpayers to fund all of the 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 funding requests that we wish we could comply with. So that concludes my comments. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I you had Amy per done. Now it's you're the cleanup batter, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And for the record, I'm Judge Tim Dixon. I'm the presiding judge of Cochise County, Superior Court Presiding Judge. I'm going to start with the justice court request. Judge Daggs, who is from Benson, he's presiding Justice of Peace, is here. If I'm not able to answer a question, also, I believe at least Judge Ward is appearing remotely. Each justice court has submitted their normal, we'll call it enhancement fund request. Nothing out of the ordinary that I noticed there. I'll just briefly remind the board what those enhancement funds are. Over the probably over a decade ago, to start with, the board approved local fees that are imposed primarily by the justice court, there are some in superior court also. And that money collected goes into the enhancement funds and are used to pay for various things, including court security. But in part, they're used to by the justice court in some courts to pay for personnel, in some for, you know, general supplies. And also a big one is to pay for the lease of our electronic equipment, computers, printers, scanners, such things as that. We are required to lease those from the administrative office of the court, AOC. They provide the equipment and as part of that rental cost, they provide also the software and the the maintenance and upkeep on that. And that amount goes up each year. The BISB justice court had only their enhancement fund requests, not much discussed there. I'll add, if there's any questions about the justice courts in particular, I'd appreciate letting me know when I'm on that court, so we won't have to back up too much. Douglas, besides their normal enhancement fund request, the Douglas Justice Court is requesting it be allowed to hire a part-time employee using court enhancement funds. Judge Villadosola, in her written request, explains why, but it has to do with dealing with her backlog and case management and to allow them to work on newly adjudicated cases. One thing I'll add, and some board members may hear me remember be saying this in prior years. Every year, there's some new requirement placed on the court which requires more work. Judge work, but also clerical work. And the one we're dealing with now is sealing criminal records. That didn't exist. I have three on my desk right now. And I'm talking, Amy, about how we're going to process those things because it requires work to do. That requirement didn't exist. It also applies always to justice court. Also, we have the expungement, which we didn't have. So there are new things that exist where even if a person or I'm sorry, a court's caseload is exactly the same, they could actually be doing more work. So that's a request by Douglas for a part-time person, again, paid for entirely through the enhancement fund. The justice court enhancement fund is healthy enough to bear that expense. I would I recommend approval of all of these, but particularly that one, I saw no issue there. Benson has only the normal enhancement fund request. Now, Wilcox, in addition to its normal enhancement fund request, has two general fund requests. One is new office furniture. Judge Ward reports that what they have now is just falling apart. They're requesting twenty-three thousand dollars for office furniture. The substantiation and what they're planning on getting was attached to his budget request. But having, you know, it's falling apart is what I'm told. New equipment will be more efficient, more comfortable for the workers. And at some point, you have to replace something like that. And the time has come that he feels it needs to be replaced. He then has a larger request, which I'll spend more time on. His audio visual system is just falling apart. And it's almost good timing, but after he submitted his request to replace his equipment, it died. So he has no ability right now to record a hearing in the way he should be able to. He had to purchase a special, like old-timey tape recorder where he is trying to use that because clearly he can't just shut down. But everything in the court needs to be recorded these days. And if if it's just a simple little traffic ticket, a civil ticket, and you don't have a recording of that, then if if the driver is held to be responsible, they can appeal and there's no record. They get to have a new trial. So that's something that really has to be done. He doesn't have the avail when the system was working, he did not have the ability to play a DVD. I can remember many police officers coming over like in a shoplifting case. We all know when we check out, the eye in the sky is watching us and the officer have that little recording of the person, you know, not scanning everything or whatever. He can't play that in his court under current equipment. Now, I did check to see how this would be affected by the improvements to the Polycom. We have a very large project underway there, paid for by grant money. And this is necessary for him to be compatible with that new system. Because I was concerned, are we doing anything twice? But talking to the court's IT person, that's not the case. So I realize it's a lot of money, but if you want to keep the Wilcox Justice Court functioning, he has to be able to record things. And this to sit right now, it's at really the bottom where the microphones don't even work.
So that equipment that you're referring to is not part of the system that the state has?
It is not. This is the the electronics inside the courtroom, the speakers, the what the digital recorders, those are all county responsibility.
So what's the cost?
Eighty-two thousand dollars.
One courtroom?
For one courtroom, and this isn't anything particularly fancy. This bring him brings him up to where the other courtrooms are at.
And they are doing fine, the other courtrooms that you know of.
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, the new improvements with the Polycom will be great. Those are improvements played paid for with the grant. This is money to like, he needs it to operate. He needs to have this equipment. Moving on then. Service of justice court. Their I guess, unique request, a special request is to convert a full-time position from enhancement funds to general funds. I want to circle back to the enhancement funds. When those were first created, the courts had many tools used to enforce payment of judgments, money owed to court. So the justice courts were able to collect money, part of which went to the general fund, a lot goes to the state, as we know, and part went into these enhancement funds, and they were healthy. But there have been changes made by the legislature primarily which have reduced the court's ability to collect on judgments. One happened, I don't really recall why, but it came down to us that we could no longer report unpaid, what is called fines, money, unpaid money to collection agencies. I can remember many people who owed money to the court forgot to pay, forgot about it, but they're trying to get a loan, they're trying to close on a house, and then they're told, well, you have look on your credit record, you need to take care of this. And suddenly they're paying that. That stopped years ago. More recently, the court cannot suspend someone's driving privileges for unpaid money. I'm afraid there's some people in the world who don't really want to pay if they can still drive. Pretty much, we are down to Arizona tax refunds, getting part of that. And if we're all lucky, they win the lottery and we can get a share of that one. But again, we have a segment of the community who might be more likely to owe money to the court and also don't work jobs where they're, you know, having money withheld. They're doing the odd jobs, the cash jobs. So the enhancement funds are not coming in as they used to. We've got courts where enhancement funds are used to pay for employees, necessary employees, not luxury item people. And for several years, I've been encouraging the justice courts to look at those balances because we don't want it to wait till it's a crisis. And there's not enough to pay these people and pay for the computers, printers and the other extras. So this is, I believe, maybe the first, but the justice court is asking to switch it from enhancement funds to general revenue. And I'm afraid I I don't think it'll be the last because I don't see the collection rates going back to what I remember them being, you know, fifteen years ago.
What was the cost?
The cost is including the EREs, forty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
For two positions?
No, for one position.
Because you said two positions.
Well, I maybe I hope I said they had two paid for enhancement funds. They want to switch one.
Oh, just one.
Yes, ma'am. So you're trying to do this gradual, so it's not a shock to anybody. I just want to put in one last plug about those enhancement funds. Sierra Vista pays the AOC forty-six thousand dollars for computers, okay? They have to have computers in these equipment. So I've always looked upon it like that's sort of doing the county a favor because I mean, that's sort of a basic item. I'm sure in the county attorney's budget is their computers and their software and so forth. So this is an item where the county, I don't know if they've ever paid, but certainly not in a long time, has paid for the court's IT equipment. So that's, we don't want to stop doing that because we could also say, well, you know, we'll keep the employee on the enhancement funds, but give me forty-six thousand dollars to pay. Sierra Vista Justice Court says, give me forty-six thousand to pay for my 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 equipment. I think it's better to look at switching the employees over.
If I may.
Yes, you may.
But there's there's no option to do that, correct? You have to purchase the computers through.
Yes, we have to do that. The only counties, I'm pretty sure, that are independent are Maricopa and Pima, who paid money to develop their own case management software. And we don't want to do that. And I'm not sure we'd be allowed to do that because obviously if the county started succeeding from the AOC and setting up their own system, that would probably drive the costs up for the other counties. So it wouldn't like, we don't really have that option. We don't have that option if you wanted to investigate going out on our own. And I know like Amy is getting at getting at some new scanners. And I remember doing that in the service of justice court because it's more efficient. You don't want to have people waiting in line to use one one piece of equipment. So the equipment's necessary, but we we pay for it.
We we have to purchase it from the AOC at this time. We've talked to Joe Casey about seeing if the county could step in and pay for the equipment for us, but I don't know that that's an option right now. So, yeah.
You asked about that program.
The county has other equipment.
And then Bowie has this, it's a basic enhancement fund request. So if there are no more questions with the justice court, I'd like to talk about our compensation request. I have seen the people who have left the clerk's office to go to work for other areas of the county. That legal secretary position is just very, very attractive. There was a question by someone about what about do other higher paid positions leave? I can testify as to that one. My judicial assistant left last year to become a legal secretary with one of the defense offices. Since then, she's been promoted to supervisor. So she's making a bit more than she was when she was my assistant. And it is not easy being my assistant, all right? I I I don't want to, I'm not trying to down talk any other position, but I suspect being my judicial assistant is maybe a little harder than being a legal secretary in one of the defense offices. So we do have other people besides the lowest ones who do leave for higher paying county jobs. It's always been a goal in the justice court to try to create some type of a progression where that new employee feels if they work hard, they 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 become experienced, they stick around, they see a path forward. For most of the justice courts, and this applies a bit to superior court too, but particularly the justice courts, there's a court assistant and there's a court manager. And those court managers historically have not left very much. So you, we've had people be court assistants for ten, fifteen years and they were always a court assistant. Now, sure, they may have gotten pay increases here and there, but no change in their title, even though clearly someone who's been there for ten years is doing more than when when they started. So I think that that is a benefit of the of that program. When we have this high turnover and high turnover together with lack of experienced people, it just hurts the entire criminal justice system, all right? The clerk's office is like the arms of the court. I could issue orders all day long, but if they don't get processed, and I may say, you know, paper, a lot of it's not paper anymore, I'll still say paper, but it's got to get processed. It's got to get doctored, entered in the database, it's got to be scanned, it's got to be handled. And the same thing happens in the justice courts. If that's not happening in an efficient way, that judge, he or she can be working as hard as they can, but there's going to be problems. We just finished up a criminal justice case flow study. It was done by a professional organization, no expense to county, it was paid for by the AOC. It was headed up by a retired Superior Court Judge from Coquigno County. And he described what their problem was, what they did to solve it. And this excellent interview was only a couple of weeks ago. Rich attended that. I appreciated him being there. One thing I found interesting is they decided, found out in Coquigno, part of their problem was turnover is too high in the clerk's office because the positions were under classified. And that was, you know, that was very recent. We started this project months ago. So I thought, well, that sounds familiar. And they reclassified the positions of the clerk, so they were paid more money. So they stuck around and became experienced, and that helped with the efficient flow of criminal cases. We're going to make these changes to these lower positions, most all the justice court positions and the lower ones we talked about. We're going to make that change. That's our priority. So whatever money is provided, that is our priority to maintain that. We don't, I don't want to ignore, though, the other part of our compensation request. The county wants a pay increases to be based on merit performance. And you can be not a court assistant, you can be in a higher position, and you're doing an excellent job. And that should be acknowledged financially. It was mentioned made about inflation, and I wasn't going to mention inflation this year, but since it was brought up, but it was brought up regarding, I think, perhaps taxpayers. But our people are affected by the same inflation, right? And so again, we're going to make that a point this year. We discussed it last year. It's still there, but when you're in those higher, what we're calling a higher paid position, you know, not at the bottom, if you're doing an excellent job, that should be acknowledged financially, particularly when we look at the cost of living going up. What we did last year with the money provided is everyone who hit a minimum performance letter level received fifty cents an hour. Clearly, that was more to the person making just over minimum wage than it was to the higher earning people. The rest of the money was divided across the board by merit. And there were three levels, which I forgot to write down, but it was like twelve hundred, fourteen hundred and something like that based on performance. That's where the money went last year, okay? What we'll do this year is reclassify those lower people with the first bucket of money, but still have some money to acknowledge to the people who are not at the lowest level. You're valued and based on your performance, we're going to we're going to recognize it.
So we differentiate it, right?
Yes, you have that across the board. The only thing that crossed the board was the fifty cents, all right? And then even then, you had to hit a minimum performance level, all right? And that was really to try to shift some of that money toward the lower ends more, all right? Because there's more of those people and fifty percent, fifty cents per hour is more noticeable to them. But whatever money we get, it's all going to be based on performance, the distribution. And let's see if I was gonna want to mention anything else. I think that's all. Thank you.
Judge, you have any questions?
I don't. Thank you.
Tom, you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. And let me get myself squared away here if I can. I wanted to talk about, oh, first of all, who is our HR representative today? I forgot that person's name.
That is Tracy Romero, the HR person from the courts.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comments about the higher-paid positions, Judge Dickerson. And I agree that turnover is very undesirable. The last time we met, Mr. Scow and I pondered the the fact that he and I had somewhat changed positions where I used to be a union representative and and Mr. Scow was kind of the head of management, and we had seemingly changed places at the table a little bit. So I also appreciate your your reference to the case flow study, and that was very interesting also, and the under-classification issue that you brought up. So let's see. I guess that concludes my comments. But but I do appreciate your elaboration there about the the highly, the more highly-paid positions because I asked that previously. And so let's see. I think I asked already, is there any problem with allowing voluntary exit interviews in the future, whether it's this department or any others? And I guess that would go to Ms. Romero.
No, there's, there's no problem.
Okay.
The only I'd add to that, sorry to interrupt, the only I'd add to that is that for an exit interview to be useful, it's got to be confidential. So I don't see ever keeping a record of one. I think that it'd be nothing wrong with Tracy gathering anecdotal information from exit interviews and saying, this seems to be why, this is often mentioned when people leave. But obviously, we don't want to, like, record those and then those be available because people aren't going to be very free to talk if that's the case.
That's true. That's that's why I think that I use the term voluntary exit interviews because I understand what you said there, Your Honor. Nonetheless, I would still be interested in exit interviews, whether it was from the courts or any other department. That concludes my remarks, Madam Chair.
Amy didn't indicate you that anymore?
No.
Remarks, questions? Well, I will. This is not a decision-making time for us, but I I certainly would agree that the lower-paid positions are are not to be treated like fodder. You know, they're indispensable, you know, and that isn't always how we treat them because we say, well, someone else could serve this same job. And we have to change that attitude. I think that it was very clear to the public and the medical profession and the whole world that when COVID was in place, they couldn't open hospital wings because they didn't have any people to clean the rooms. They had doctors and nurses, but no way to clean the rooms. So we have to change our attitude about the people who are standing at the front desk and how important it is that we keep them long enough that they know what to say. And so I applaud you all for looking at that. I think people in high positions deserve salaries also. But a gallon of milk costs them the same as it does someone who's making twenty thousand. So I'm not as, I'm not as eager to reward them as I am those people who are doing their job and doing it faithfully and and maybe don't have the experience, but yet are willing to show up every day. So thank you for looking carefully at them and wanting to reward them. If there's no other comments, you have anything to say?
I do not.
Okay. This work session is adjourned.